I will call to order the Monday, August 11th of the Verona City Council. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call. Ms. Schofield, please.
Alderperson Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Doyle.
Here.
Alderperson Linder.
Here.
Alderperson McGilvery.
Here.
Alderperson Steiner.
Here.
And Alderperson yours.
Here.
Alderpersons Ricky and Touche are absent in excuse tonight.
Thank you. We do have a quorum, so we will proceed. I'm not seeing anyone out in the audience this evening for public comment, but I will ask anyhow if there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak this evening. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Not seeing any. We will move on. Included with your agenda were the minutes from the July 28th meeting of the common council. What's your pleasure?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. McGilvery. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carried. The minutes are approved. Under mayor's business, a couple things. Just really want to commend all of the city staff and everyone that was involved in another successful national night out. It was a great event. The weather cooperated. A lot of good comments from people, and I saw a number of the alders there as well. So, again, thank you, and Chief Givers here, thank you for all your efforts as well. Also, wanted to remind people that voting will occur tomorrow here at City Hall and at the library, depending on where you live. So, please exercise your right to vote. And then the final thing, and I know we have two alders absent this evening, but we are wondering what everyone's availability would be on August 20th, which is a Wednesday evening, to do a committee of the whole to specifically talk more about the downtown area. So, we would like to have as many people there as possible. So, can Liz and Stu?
Do you know what time that you were looking out for that?
Probably six-ish, seven-ish. We could do either one.
Oh, no, Heather and I have parks.
You have parks? Okay.
Six thirty.
Okay. What about other people?
I'm free.
You're free, Jack? You're free. Lucas, free? Okay. Mac, you don't know yet?
Depends on what my wife does.
Mr. Steiner, what time does Parks usually start?
Six thirty.
Six thirty? Okay. I think it would be pretty difficult, Bill, to do something prior to that, and if we go after, then it gets pretty late. We could check maybe with David to see if they could move Parks up a little bit for one meeting. Mr. Burns?
Yeah, I can check with the Parks director on what's planned for the agenda and if they have any flexibility with the time. There are other dates, too. We could potentially look at other dates the following week. Perhaps I can follow up by sending out an email to everyone. I'll find out what I can about the Parks and then inquire about other dates as an option if that date ends up not looking the best.
That'd be great, Bill. Thank you. That concludes my report for this evening. We will move to the administrator's report. Mr. Burns, please.
Yeah, thank you. A couple updates this evening. First, for the fire and EMS facility project. Site work is continuing with site utilities this week. Very shortly, work should be beginning on the concrete work for the basement and foundation areas. The city is in the process of rebidding some of the bid packages where we did not have adequate bids from the initial bidding, or bids came in without a bid bond. That information is available now, and bids are due back prior to the council meeting on the 25th with action on the 25th anticipated, or having those available for potential action on the 25th. We're also planning at that meeting to have recommendations on the vendor for the asphalt and looking at the asphalt and concrete areas, which was one of the open items. The design team is continuing to meet on a weekly basis. We'll be meeting again tomorrow. At that time, a couple of the items that we'll be discussing are some of the cost-saving and value engineering options, as well as options for temporarily relocating the administrative offices and workspaces in the fire station to allow for that portion of the building to be demolished and construction to continue on the remainder of the footprint for the new station. The plan is that the existing apparatus space would remain in operation until the new facility can be occupied, and at that time, the trucks and the staff would move over to the new station. Also, we talked about this a little bit at Finance Committee tonight, but the planned burn-in of the Danecom interoperable radio system that was planned for this week has been pushed back. At this point, Dane County is indicating that it may be several weeks until that is complete. We'll continue to work with Dane County Cities and Villages Association and Dane County on the status of that project, and I did send out an update from DCCVA today that has some additional information on that. And then finally, for the city's budget process, Finance Committee met last week to begin reviewing the capital improvement plans for the proposed budget. Departments are currently working on their operating budgets. We're also starting to look at equalized value and other revenues. We're anticipating department operating requests coming into administration by the end of August. Then during the month of September, we'll be working on reviewing those with departments and putting together information for the Finance Committee, and Finance Committee is tentatively planning to meet on September 29th and October 1st to begin reviewing the department operating budgets. And I'd be available for any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Burns? Not seeing any. Thank you, Bill. So, we will move on to the engineers' report. Mr. Gunlock, please.
Thank you. We'll start out with Lincoln Street this evening. Contractor has installed the curb and gutter on both sides and concrete driveway approaches. The remaining side street gutter pans will be finished this week. Crushed aggregate base course and finished street grading will also be completed this week or early next week. Asphalt binder course is scheduled for the end of next week. Prairie Oaks Phase 3. Curb and gutter and crushed aggregate base course have been completed, and the asphalt binder course is scheduled for the end of the week. Sidewalks will then be installed and the street terraces landscaped. That will complete Phase 3 until next year when the asphalt surface course will be installed. Scenic Ridge Phase 3. All the underground utilities have been completed, and the subgrade has been tested. Crushed aggregate base course will be installed this week, followed by curb and gutter placement. Curb and gutter should be installed next week. Project will be completed by the middle of September. Cathedral Point, Phase 6. Contractor has completed the sanitary sewer and water main on the north portion of the development and is working on the sanitary sewer in the southern portion and installing water services on the north portion. Work will continue on this development through October. And finally, Epic Water Main. The contractor at Epic is installing water main to the Annex 2 building and making Campus 4 modifications to the water system. The water main installation is scheduled to be completed by the first week of September. That concludes my report on public works projects. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Steiner, a question?
Bob, are we doing any detention pond work this fall?
No.
Is there any plans for next year?
We are planning, we are working with the Corps of Engineers and Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources on what permitting they want to see and what they want to see done with the channel south of City Hall. We intended to do a stormwater basin there. I'm not sure we can get it permitted. That is the only detention basin that I'm aware of. There was some talk that Silent Street Pond would be dredged, but we haven't proceeded with that.
That's the one I was going to point you at, but thank you for anticipating that.
Other questions for Mr. Gunlock? Not seeing any. Thank you, Bob.
Welcome.
We will move on then to committee reports. We'll begin with the Plan Commission. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve and adopt the amendments to 13-2-5C amending the flood insurance study maps.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Linder?
In June of 2014, the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources notified the city that updates have been made to the flood insurance study for Dane County. Due to these updates, the city's floodplain ordinance needs to be amended by September 17, 2014, or Verona will be suspended from the National Flood Insurance Program. The proposed zoning ordinance text amendment will change the flood insurance study map numbers and ensure compliance with the flood, National Flood Insurance Program. The proposed ordinance change will update the FIS with the flood insurance study map numbers for other mapping changes that occurred in Dane County and will have no impact on the city. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on August 4, 2014, and voted to recommend approval of the zoning text amendment.
You have heard the background, the explanation. Are there questions for the committee or for staff? Not seeing any. The motion before you is to approve ordinance number 14-849 amending Section 13-2-5, parent C, of the Code of Ordinances floodplains. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Linder?
Thank you. Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve and adopt the amendments to Section 13-1-250 and Table 13-1-250 of the zoning ordinance.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Linder?
The proposed zoning ordinance text amendment would amend the plant selection and plat classification requirements in the zoning ordinance. The proposed amendments will update the type of plant material preferred by the city. The proposed changes will not provide any landscaping points to plants classified by the DNR as invasive. Additional plantings besides the types listed in the ordinance can be allowed, and the list of plantings provided is preferred planting list. The revised ordinance has been reviewed by a horticulturist at Epic and by the city's park and forestry director. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on August 4, 2014, and voted to recommend approval of the zoning text amendment.
Go ahead, Mr. Linder.
So, basically, it's updating the plant, the preferred list for plants. It affects stuff that comes through the city, but it does not affect individual homeowners. Like I said, it's preferred list, so it's not, doesn't have to be this way, but it gets rid of things like ash trees, I believe, that have emerald ashbore type problems. I believe Mr. Diaz had some, had a lot of work on this, so maybe he'd like to add something.
Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. Yeah, it does take out a few troublesome species, like Japanese barberry, which is, I believe, classified as invasive by the DNR and additionally has been linked, at least in some studies, to the spread of ticks and of Lyme disease. So, it's not something we really want to be encouraging people to be planting, and since I was looking at it anyway, I decided to, in addition to some of the troublesome species that were taken out, to add some good native species to give people more options. And just kind of to echo the stuff that Mr. Linder said, this doesn't, isn't going to have a huge impact on anyone who are, or this isn't going to have any impact on anything that currently exists. It's just something going forward that'll make our ordinance a little bit better.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve ordinance 14-850 amending Section 13-1-250 and repealing Appendix L of the Code of Ordinances landscaping. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Linder, anything else from Plan Commission?
That is all.
All right. Thank you. We will move then to the Finance Committee. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9B1, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the monthly bills in the amount of $586,552.36.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. In the way of explanation, two of the larger items from this month's bill payment, first being to the Bond Trust Services Corporation for our 2012 bond issued debt service payment. That amount is $107,234.38 and includes multiple borrowings that we've done in 2012, everything from the library on through TIF and stormwater, I believe, was the other one. Secondly, we have $141,401.70 to Hammersley Stone Company for our Lincoln Street water main replacement. That would be all.
You have heard the explanation of the bills. Are there further questions for the committee or for staff? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the payment of bills, an amount totally of $586,532.36. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, Mr. McGilvery?
I believe it was $552.
$552 is what I had written down. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Thank you. Anything else from Finance?
That would be all. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we have Public Safety Committee. Mr. Years, please.
The Public Safety Committee did not meet due to a lack of quorum, so we don't really have anything to bring to the council tonight.
So, no action on either of the two items. Correct? Thank you. Anything else to add, Mr. Years? All right. Then we are on, next on the agenda, under Old Business, we have discussion and possible action regarding the process for leasing the city's old library building at 130 North Franklin Street. Mr. Burns, if you would, please.
Yes, thank you. The council discussed this property back in July, and at that time, the consensus was that the city should look to retain ownership of the property and consider options for leasing out the facility for a short-term basis once the Sugar River United Methodist Church vacates the property. Since we've had the last discussion on this, I have followed up with representatives of the church that's currently using the building. They had a court date last Friday for the action for them to purchase the Wildcat Lanes property. Things did go well for them at that process. There were no surprises, so they are still anticipating closing on the Wildcat Lanes property on August 15th of this month, and it is still their intention to be out of the current library by the end of August. I also took a look at the process that the city had used to lease out the property originally when it was leased to the Sugar River Church. At that time, the city had put together an advertisement that was published in the paper at the time and available in the community, indicating that the city was seeking to lease the facility and asking interested parties to submit a letter of interest, including a proposed lease rate on a monthly basis for the property. So, I had looked at a potential process that we could use, and first of all, I've also asked the public works director to take a look at the condition of the property and what work may need to be done if we are seeking another tenant there. One item that we do know is that the parking lot will need some maintenance, and that's likely some work that we would be doing next spring. We're working and putting together a cost estimate for that maintenance for the parking area. Recently, the city has done some work on the doors and entryways of the library. Those are in good shape, but we are also reviewing some of the mechanical systems just to check on the condition of those prior to soliciting another tenant. If there is interest in proceeding with trying to lease the facility, I think a possible timeline that we could follow would be if there's the direction tonight, we would wait until the closing takes place and confirm from the church that they are intending to leave at the end of the month. Then potentially as early as next week, publish a notice in the paper on our website indicating that we're soliciting letters of interest. We also have had contacts from two churches that are interested in the property, and representatives from the school district have gone through the facility. They may have an interest. It sounds like not for this school year, but potentially future school years for some of their charter school programs, so we would contact them, see if they're interested in putting a proposal together. We could potentially solicit proposals through the end of August and then bring an item back for action by the city council in September. That would give staff some time to review any work needed on the building, as well as work with parties that may be interested on terms of a lease, and then have a potential start date for a lease as early as October 1st, so we'd have a one-month gap in users, which may be good anyway to facilitate the transition in the site. I think a couple of key questions for the council tonight are, first, are we interested in proceeding to solicit tenants for a lease? If so, are there any particular terms that we would want to see in the agreement? As a starting point, I think that we would be looking for at least the rate of rent that we have from the current tenant. And then the final item is what term would we be willing to consider? My personal thought is that we would want to keep a relatively short-term lease, since this is identified as a future redevelopment site. Possibly, we'd be looking at a one-year lease with the ability to extend for an additional year that's similar to what we had been doing with Sugar River Church. I personally would not recommend going out much longer than that until we have a better sense of what redevelopment may occur in this area. But I guess at this point, any feedback or comments from the council and direction would be helpful.
Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. I like the idea of getting as much rent as we can, since we are managing basically what is taxpayer property. I guess another thing I would like to say is that if there's any way we can put any restrictions on any sort of use, that'd be a nuisance to the neighbors, anything loud, anything that is late-night traffic. I mean, people do live over there, and I wouldn't want, you know, to see a church move out and something really noisy move in instead.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Other comments? Mr. Years?
Yes, I fully support re-leasing the building. However, I would want to make sure that we don't have an adverse effect on the Verone area needs network, which is still using the basement of that facility. I do know they are currently looking at another possible location, but the timeline for that is still somewhat up in the air. That's my biggest concern, is that we don't have a negative impact on them, as well as I'm in favor of having a short-term lease, especially since that area's not in the TIF yet, so I don't think in a year, well, you're going to have to really worry about being able to restructure that TIF district for the downtown area, and that'd be ample time.
Thank you, Mr. Years. Good comments. Other comments? Mr. Linder?
What is the current rent that serves Spain, and how much? Did you have a chance to find how much the building is worth?
Mr. Burns?
The current lease rate is $4,593 per month. I have not had a chance to get our assessor to give a particular estimate on the value of the building. I am working with them on getting some information on, based on the condition of the property, square footage, and lease rates, and certainly we'd want to get that information before we evaluate proposals, but I don't have that available tonight.
Other questions or comments? Bill and I have had the opportunity to talk on this a number of times, and I agree with what he's laying out as far as the process and the timeline. I think if we do a one-year term with a potential one-year extension with, you know, agreeable both parties, I think that's a good thing for us. So, I would suggest, unless there's any concerns and we can add in Mr. Diaz's thoughts, it's a good thought, and also, Mr. Years, your thoughts. Certainly, we don't want to do anything that would harm the food pantry, and we can add that in. But if, are there any other comments or questions? Otherwise, we really would like the approval to go ahead and keep this moving. Comments, questions, potential motions? Mr. Linder, then Mr. Years?
So, yeah, I was just doing some quick math, so if that's right, I guess we get about $55,000 a year from them. And then when they were there, what, maybe, how many, do you know how many years they were there, Sugar River? That we got? Mr. Burns, you know that offhand?
Yeah, I think it was approximately eight years in total.
Okay, so, $400,000, I think, that's pretty good. So, yeah, I'd be open to leasing it again. I think, I think that's pretty good as opposed to selling it. I guess I don't know exactly what it's worth, but if I remember right, $400,000 in eight years isn't too bad.
Mr. Years?
Thank you. I was wondering, do we need to make a motion, or is this something we could direct staff to go through on consensus?
It could be by consensus.
It could be, it could be either way. Consensus is fine as well, because anything we do is going to come back to the council, except we do want to get the ad in the newspaper as soon as we can, so. But for final approval, it would come back to the council, so we can certainly do it by consensus.
Because I would have no objections, otherwise I'm also willing to make a motion.
Consensus is fine. We'll do it by consensus.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, everyone, on that.
For the closed sessions, we could take two motions.
Correct. Correct. So, there's no action. We had consensus there. We have, the next two items are both, we're looking at going into closed session. One is under Old Business, one is under New Business. We could, if we had separate motions, we could handle both of those motions at the same time and not have to go into closed session, reconvene, and then go back in closed session, so whatever the wishes are of the council. But I'm suggesting that that's the action that we take, that we have separate motions on each one and handle them both right away. Thoughts? Potential motions? Mr. Years?
I'll make a motion to, I've never made the motion before, so forgive me if I do it wrong, to go into closed session on item number 10-2, which is the possible action of case number 13CV3717, Local 311 AIAFFAFLCIO versus the City of Verona and Verona Joint Fire District. Dane County Circuit Court pending. The common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Section 19.85, parent 1, parent G, of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of conferring with City of Verona Legal Council, who is rendering oral or written service advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the city. With respect to litigation which it is involved, the common council may convene in open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session.
We do have a motion. You have heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Linder. This requires a roll call vote. We'll have Ms. Schofield read the roll, please.
Alderperson Linder?
Aye.
Alderperson McGilvery?
Aye.
Alderperson Steiner?
Aye.
Alderperson yours?
Aye.
Alderperson Diaz?
No.
And Alderperson Doyle?
Aye.
That motion carries. Will the minutes reflect that Alderperson Diaz voted no? Do we have a motion on the second item? Mr. Linder?
All right, I'll give it a shot. In item 11-1, make a motion to go in a closed session for discussion of possible action, negotiating strategy for boundary agreement discussions with the town of Verona. The city council may convene in closed session as authorized by Section 19-85, excuse me, 19.85, parent C1, parent CE, of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of delivering or negotiating the purpose of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The common council may reconvene in open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session.
We do have a motion. You've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Years. Again, this requires a roll call vote. We'll have Ms. Schofield read the roll.
Alderperson McGilvery?
Aye.
Alderperson Steiner?
Aye.
Alderperson yours?
Aye.
Alderperson Diaz?
Aye.
Alderperson Doyle?
Aye.
And Alderperson Linder?
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. So, we are now in closed session. So we are now in closed session.